I welcome you all to the September 24th meeting of the Cranston City Council. I'll ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Present.
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 Present. At this time, I'd like Josie Detroitia and Sophia DePippo to come to the podium, please. I'm gonna ask you, they're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'm gonna ask you to just remain standing at their, the podium's right there, ladies.
You can, you can stay with it, so you don't trip.
Whenever you're, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like you to remain standing. Last week Cranston lost a very vocal and passionate advocate for Cranston schools, whether you are a student, a graduate, a dropout, a parent, a grandparent, a guardian, a teacher, or a, or just a member of the staff. Jackie White touched your life in some way by her 14 years of dedication to the Cranston Public Schools as a member of the, of the school committee, and countless years as an advocate and a member of parent-teacher groups through various schools throughout the city. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Jackie. I thank you. You're seated. I'll entertain a motion for, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting.
So moved. Second.
Are there any public acknowledgements and commendations, Council Vice President Navarro?
Thank you, Council President. And yes, it is a special moment today. I know for, for myself, these are the best times being on the city council over, you know, for six years, and recognizing some of the accomplishments of the youth in our city. And tonight, we do have the CLCF Gals U softball team here tonight in attendance, and the entire city council wants to recognize them. But before we do that, I just wanna say that one of the great things that, or one of the things that makes, makes the city great, and is sometimes overlooked, I don't know if we recognize all the volunteers in this city, but there's so many different organizations from CLCF to Western, Cranston West Little League, to Cranston National Girls Fast Pitch, and, I mean, we have so many great organizations. And we have so many great parents that sacrifice their time, and they wanna give our children the best, and coach them, and, and teach them lessons in life, and how to win, lose, and everything. And we, not just in sports, but we have volunteers in music and all other things in the city. And it's, and it's close to my heart, because I volunteered for president of a little league for, for six years down right next to, in my neighborhood, and those were the best times that I've had in, in, you know, spending with my children and giving time to, to the community. In any event, so it's a special occasion for me to, to, and for this city council, to recognize the coaches as well as the, the girls for winning a state championship. So what we have here is the, the CLCF Gals U, eight U, or eight-and-under softball team in proud recognition of winning the state championship with an impressive showing at the state tournament in Brayton Park in Cranston, and impressive showing there matched, they had an unbelievable 33, one-and-one record through six tournaments this summer. So let's give them all a big hand for what a great accomplishment. If they could, they could stand up, if the coaches and the, and the girls can stand up. Council President, how did you wanna, you wanted me to just announce the names and then, and then bring?
And then you can present that to the coaches.
To the coaches? Alright, so.
Need a hand?
I think, I think I got it, I think, a little bit here. So let me just to mention them, be it, be it known that all the Cranston City Council hereby issues this citation to, we have Emily Bissette. Elizabeth Lewandowski. Marissa Such. Sophia DePippo. Sophia Ferry. Mackenzie Bissette. Ava Brandow. Josie Detroitia. Avery Izzy. Thank you. Emma Cochran. Cor, I'm sorry, Cochran. Sydney Casali. And Emily Rose. And if I could have all the coaches come up, we have Coach Keith Brandow, Coach Bill Rose. We have Coach Ed Detroitia, Coach PJ Bissette. Coach Tom Lindowski. See what I mean about the volunteers?
No.
The coaches involved. I love. We have Coach Bill Rose and Coach Rich Ferry. And we got Coach Mark DePippo. So Maria's, Maria's, Marissa's not here. Did we miss a couple? If, if you could just email me the name, and we'll just, I mean, I went by what roster that I was given. Thank you very much. Thank you, Rich. Again, big, big hand for them. Nice job, bro.
Congratulations to all of you. And you have a brief window of opportunity to exit unless you wanna stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you for coming. Good luck next year. Okay, there's a, there's a request. If there's no dissension, I'd entertain a motion to take one item out of the Safety Services and License Committee agenda, which was a La Frontera. It was a tobacco, tobacco permit. I'd like the solicitor to weigh in on this before I ask, well, let's, hold on. Is there any dissension on the, on taking this out of order? There is none, so we're gonna take this now.
Yes, Council President, I've spoken with the applicant's attorney, who've discussed this issue. I unfortunately was not able to be at the last Safety Services Committee. I intend to keep a dialogue open with the applicant's attorney and hope for resolution. We had spoken, my brother's court excused in October during Safety Services, so with your permission, we've agreed to put this on the docket, the meeting in November for Safety Services, hopefully for a resolution at that time.
Is there a motion to move this to the, to the docket?
So moved.
Motion, a second.
I just wanna state for the record that part and parcel of this negotiation involves keeping the applicant's license in good standing until a full hearing is heard by the council.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, the discussion?
Yes. Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, just something that came up, I was at that meeting. I don't believe that, I think we have, as a full council, have to allow that vote in order to allow that business to be open in the interim. I don't think that the committee, quite frankly, I didn't believe it that, I don't believe we had the authority, because it's an appeal, basically, of, of, on a denial of a license, which is, if I read the ordinance correct that the clerk had sent, requires an appeal to the full council. So I have no objection to working it out, but I think that, my gut feeling the other, last week was the same. It was before Safety Services, but I think, I think we, we need something from the full council in order to allow that to continue.
Through the chair, the appeal in the code is to Safety Services. If you read the code, I, I do have it. That's, the appeal process goes to Safety Services, they're the ones that hear that. That's why it's being sent back, because it should've stayed, it should've been addressed in committee.
But we, we continued it to today, and I don't know if we need anything to suggest that he, that he can continue to operate, I'm just.
Let me say this, in any event, even if it's a full council action, it's necessary, we can do that in November, but I'd like it recommitted for the time back to Safety Services, because, of course, the applicant's attorney raises some interesting issues that I'd like some time to work out with him. And I think the applicant deserves that, and I think we do too.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm not questioning that.
No, I understand.
I just wanna make sure that it's, it's an active license in that, during that period of time, that's all.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Okay, we're back on our regular agenda. Did I receive the sign-up sheet for doctored items? We're gonna have a, this is now a public hearing on doctored items, items appearing on the, this evening's agenda.
My name is Diana Gordon, and I live at 363 Pontiac Avenue. I've come to you several times concerning the spread of halfway houses in Auburn. It seems now that we have a city definition in the amendment of Chapter 17 dash 04 dash 030 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled "Zoning Definitions Under Section 1." It states halfway houses as a residential facility for adults or children who have been institutionalized for criminal conduct, who require a group setting to facilitate the trans, transition into a functional member of society. This definition makes halfway houses an entity now. We now have five halfway houses in and around Auburn and three methadone clinics. This can cause potential problems, such as the incident that occurred in Connecticut, when a family was beaten, the women raped, and then all were burned alive with only the husband left to tell the story. These men met in a halfway house just two miles from the crime scene. These private businesses are too close to schools and playgrounds. One sits kitty-corner across the street from a school and a playground. And a Suboxin clinic, Suboxin is a derivative of methadone, is across the street from a daycare. Right now, we have no laws to protect our communities from the unchecked spread. They need to be licensed, monitored, in-state or federally regulated. They are not at this time. We are not privy to know what type of criminals live in them, they need no variances, so they can pop up anywhere at any time. I know that the council has no jurisdiction over them, and that you cannot change the ordinances to control or stop them, but I must keep this subject in the people's eyes so we can get our legislature to change these laws to protect the good citizens of Cranston, our state, and our country. We need all, we all need to feel safe and to be safe. Thank you very much. Bye.
Sarah Lee. Fred Jocelyn.
Good evening. Fred Jocelyn, 23, Gaglio Court, Honorable Members of the City Council, Honorable Members of the City Administration. I'm here this evening with regard to the ordinance number, regarding the comprehensive plan. I believe it's 612-7, on page two. I appeared before you in the last regular meeting and spoke on the same item which appeared that evening, and brought to the members' attention the holding of the renowned Supreme Court in the case of West against McDonald, decided by the renowned Supreme Court on May of 2011. In that holding, the Supreme Court stated that the, the statutory language, which appears to a layman at least, that there's a requirement to file within a certain time period, the comprehensive plan with the state of Rhode Island, is not a mandatory requirement. Thereafter, as I recall, and I might add, when this meeting was opened, the reading of the minutes was suspended, but thereafter the last meeting, when I raised that issue, I believe on Councilwoman Bucci's motion, and after a vote of 6-2, this matter, number 612-7, was put over for a special session of the city council. So therefore, I raised the issue tonight that procedurally, the matter is not properly before you. This is a regular scheduled meeting. But this is more than a matter of semantics. Obviously, the reason why, in my opinion, that it was put over for a special session, is that the profound consequences of this document, which has, I would estimate, 500 or 600 pages in it, and which will control land use in the city of Cranston for five years or more in the future, requires much diligent consideration before it's passed on to the state of Rhode Island. Now, I, I refer to that holding again in the matter of West against McDonald, to illustrate that our Supreme Court looks at comprehensive plans somewhere in the, in the gra, in the, in the, in the nature of, of a charter that we would be viewing here in the city of Cranston. For example, I'll give you, I'll read to you from page 11 of the decision. "The comprehensive plan establishes a binding framework, a blueprint, that dictates town and city promulgation of conforming zoning and planning ordinances. A municipality must adopt its comprehensive plan in the same manner in which it adopts ordinances."
Thirty seconds, Judge.
"The ordinances must be done consistent with the, the comprehensive plan must be passed consistent with the ordinances and city charter. In closing, I ask that this matter be put over to a special session, so that the matter can be given the proper attention that it deserves. Thank you very much."
Just as a point of clarification, there was some talk about a special session at that meeting, but then it finally was decided to just move it to the regular committee meeting, which it was, and it was discussed. No, Peter. But this is a document, just for clarification, that we've heard repeatedly from the, from the planner, that only 10% was changed, and this, these hearings have been going on since 2003. There have been many, many hearings, many, many discussions, and the document that we would be putting forward with just a few adjustments that were suggested, because it's already gone to the state, is something that this council has already approved. This is, this document has already gone to the state, it's come back, and this is just a reaffirmation based on some minor changes that, that we went through at those meetings, and were outlined to all of the council, just for your, just for your edification. That's it on people that have signed up. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on an agenda right of this evening? There being none, we'll close that portion. Moving on, we have report of committees, Finance Committee, Paul Arquette, Chairman. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Committee passed a resolution authorizing real estate tax payments. Is it in a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Just a reminder, Councilman, if, if you can't hear yourself through the speakers, then the, they can't hear you on the, on the TV monitor, so.
Next on the Finance Agenda, Council President, was a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax payments. Is it in a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, a second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next on the agenda is tax interest waiver approvals, as recommended by City Treasurer. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next Council President was the bid award sale of 275 Atwood Avenue, former police station headquarters. That was under recommendation from the administration, a discussion at the Finance Committee meeting.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
The motion, a second, any discussion? No discussion from the council. Would the Finance Director please step forward and state that the, the parameters that were met with this, please?
Thank you, Council President. As you know, we went out to bid, and we had the bid opening at the last council meeting. It was forwarded on to the Finance Committee meeting. At that time, we had, we sent out 17 bid proposals. There was only one response. That was from a company, it's Crown Holdings LLC. They bid on the property a million dollars. The assessed value of the property is, as of 12/31/11, was $1,075,500, based on an ordinance stating that the, the sale could only be commensurate based on 90% of the assessed value. That would equate to $967,950. Therefore, the million dollars exceeded that figure. I would believe it was approved unanimously at the Finance Committee meeting, and therefore, I would ask the council if, to give a bid award to Crown Holdings II LLC, which happens to also be Copian Auto Associates.
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Strom? The, I'm sorry, Councilman Stan Maria?
I just wanna go over the project description on Section 5. It's gonna include, it's gonna be an office development, and include medical offices. Is that correct?
I, I know it's gonna be office development, I'm not quite sure what he intends to have in that facility.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. And one further note, Finance Director, the, we did receive a memo. Could you just share that with the public about where those funds by ordinance and charter must go?
Okay.
In brief.
Yes, based by, based on ordinance, the proceeds from a sale of property can be used of one or two areas. It can be used for capital projects, future capital projects, or it can be used for paying down debt service in a particular fiscal year. It was asked of me by Councilman Stykos, which I sent a memo out to the council on September 17th, last Monday. Per my fiscal advisor, he stated that it wouldn't be any benefit of the city to do any type of prepayment of the bonds, because we recently refunded 2,000, what they called, certificate of participation bonds, and also 2,004 general obligation bonds. And additionally, we have some issuance of bonds through Rhode Island Clean Water, which are a very low interest rate. So therefore, and there's also a 10-year call provision on most GO bonds. So his opinion, and I have to agree with him, it would not be economic to prepay any of the city's more recent issuance of bonds. So keeping that in mind, my opinion is that we should use that money to, to offset our debt service that we're gonna be paying this, in this year's budget. And with that in mind, as you know, last year, we made a, an adjustment to the financial records for the school department on their deficit and, and what they owed to the city by a million dollars. That was based on a consent order through the Corullo Action, and with that in mind, we, we made the adjustment, we reduced their debt to us, and we also gave them the money which actually decreased our fund balance from the city side. My opinion is that we should use this money to, basically, as I stated earlier, to reduce the debt, which should trickle down into a surplus number if all goes well this fiscal year, and that figure should go back to replenish our fund balance. So that was my recommendation, I believe, at the last Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. Chairman Arquette, continue. I think you're on 612-3.
Ordnance Committee had met in the.
Can you speak into the microphone? Is it working?
Ordnance Committee met and passed ordinance 6-dash-12-dash-3, ordinance in amendment of Chapter 17.24, the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled "Zoning Site Plan Review," as amended in committee, September 13, 2012. Entertain a motion.
Okay, there's a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Donahue. Councilman Donahue, could I just ask you a question? Could you read line 37, please? Aloud?
Line 37?
Yes.
Provide open space and public access through landscape design?
I'm doing that because we had different varying copies and lines, so I wanna make sure that we all had the same copy this time out. Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Just very quickly, I don't have, I was, uh, in the committee discussions when this ordinance was discussed and revised. I actually just wanted to thank Councilman Stykos for his leadership during that meeting, uh, and for the improvements that he was able to make to this ordinance. Uh, his work contributed to, I think, the improvement of the bill, so thank you, Councilman.
Okay, any further discussion? Yeah, I echo your sentiments. Thank you, Steve, for the work you did on this. Uh, any, uh, further discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Continue.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance committee met and passed ordinance six dash twelve dash four. Ordinance in amendment of Chapter Seventeen, Point Twenty, Point Oh Three Zero of the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning, schedule of uses, as amended in committee, September thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? And these copies reflect that change for the, uh, for the drive-through. Is that correct? Any, anyone see any other errors? Those, that was an, an error that was overlooked at one point in time? Okay, uh, with that being said, any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Uh, yes.
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 Next on the Agenda, Council President, ordinance committee met and passed, um, six dash twelve dash five. Ordinance in amendment of Chapter Seventeen, Point Zero Four, Point Zero Three Zero, the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning definitions. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Councilman, uh, Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Could we look at page twenty-one, um, under, uh, the nightclub definition? I'd like to ask through the, through the President, to, uh, Mr. LaPola, just a quick question on the record.
Uh, where are you?
Page, page twenty-one.
One oh eight, three. What's your, what's your question?
My question is, will this affect the parking restrictions on nightclubs? Can you come up and state that for the record for me, please?
Through the chair, Council President, my name is Peter LaPola.
Yeah, I'm right here.
My name is Peter LaPola. I'm the director of planning for the City of Cranston. To the extent that the zoning ordinance in the section that has standards for parking for nightclubs, the standards that, we did not touch that, all we did is definition and use, those parking standards would remain.
Because we did change them.
If that's in the, if that's, I mean, I didn't even look at the parking standards. So if it's there, we didn't change them.
So you're just changing the definition, not changing the parking requirements.
No, because we didn't touch the parking standards yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next on the Agenda, Council President, the ordinance committee met and, um, passed six dash twelve dash seven. Ordinance approving the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan for the City of Cranston, continued August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Which one are we on? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Favickio.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, I appreciate what, uh, the judge had to say, but I think that this has been bandied about for quite a few years, and we've done quite a lot of work on it. Um, at least, and the other vital issue is that we could lose some funding and grant money that may become available to have a, uh, comprehensive plan in place. So I think it's imperative that we, uh, adopt this finally, and these are based on, uh, recommendations for changes from the state to Mr. LaPola. Uh, and I think it's a good, you know, it's the best we've got, and I think we need to do it so that we don't lose out on any funds that may become available.
Any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. And just for a cl, point of clarification, uh, Mr. LaPola, when will this, uh, what process are we now, are we now in another eighteen-month process, or is this a quicker process than the last one we went through?
Again, through the chair is, um, as soon, I'm assuming the mayor will sign this. When the mayor signs this, um, uh, transmitter will be sent to the state, signal with the copies of the plan is approved. I would assume they'll push it before the State Planning Council will be approved shortly.
Just so that the council is clear and the public, our adoption of this puts a buffer on the, the notion that Councilman Favickio brought forward that we would be ineligible for some, some grant monies, because now the ball's in the court. So we did approve it twice, and, um, we should not be denied any, any grant monies that are tied to an adoption of the, of the comprehensive plan. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Council President, can I ask one quick question?
Well, we already had the discussion. We've got, through, through the chair.
Just a hypothetical, what if the state doesn't approve this?
The, the letter that we, we see from the state is if the city council made, adopted the plan with the changes as suggested, they would put this for adoption. So I have to, I mean, I can't guarantee it because I don't vote, I'm not the state, but I would take the state at its words, we did what the state asked. I would assume that they would honor that letter and adopt the plan.
Thank you, Council President.
And if not, then we'll have an argument with them.
Thank you, Mr. LaPola.
I just wanted that on the record, thanks.
I understand that. Okay, uh, is that complete your report, Councilman? For ordinance?
Yes, that finishes the ordinance agenda.
Safety Services and License Committee Majority Leader, Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance seven, twelve, one. Ordinance amendment of Title Six, the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and twelve, entitled business licenses and regulations fireworks vendor license. Uh, this was amended in committee and passed unanimously. I move passage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. Um, this, uh, ordinance will basically charge a fee for any vendor who'd like to sell fireworks and also regulate fireworks. Fireworks is a very dangerous commodity. Um, gunpowder is involved in fireworks where fireworks are stored, should be monitored. Um, also, in, in the day of, of, um, terrorism, uh, any act can occur. So this, this, um, ordinance is on the cutting edge. Many communities will follow. Uh, this leads, I recommend passage of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Seven, twelve, two.
Ordinance amendment of Title Eight, Chapter Twelve, the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and twelve, titled noise abatements, noise abatement fireworks hours of use. Um, this is Councilman Donahue's, um, original thought, which was amended in committee. He was amenable to the changes, I believe, Minority Leader, is that correct?
That is correct. Through the chair, that is, that is correct, although in front of me, I don't think I have the device.
I was going to say the same thing. I, I only have the one page, Council President, which doesn't have the amendment that I see.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I can provide copies. The copy, um, that should be near a packet, we had some issues with the copier, was amended in committee on nine seventeen. Under fireworks discharge was added between the hours of twelve noon and eleven PM, or by special permission of the Safety Services and Licensing Committee.
And this was, this, just as a reminder, this was sent electronically to all the, uh, the councilmen. Anyone have a problem with not having the second page? Because it was sent to you electronically. Any problem? There being none? Do we have a motion and a second? Clerk, please take the roll.
Uh, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, law frontera has been moved, as you announced at the beginning of the meeting, so I have nothing further from my committee.
Thank you. Uh, Claims Committee, Councilman Stykos.
This is just a notification of two claims that were settled, uh, by the Claims Committee.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'm going to ask for a, someone to make a motion to reconsider the last, um, seven, seven, twelve, dash, two.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Under discussion?
The motion is second.
For what reason are we doing this?
There, there's some language that is appearing on the page that we didn't receive that should have been deleted, so, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion to reconsider it? Clerk, please take the roll.
Point, point of order, before we vote, we need, the council needs to vote to put it on the floor. It's, the motion's been made, second for reconsideration, now the council needs to take a vote to have it before us.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We, we're voting to, to reconsider. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Now, now it's before, Council President, why are we revisiting it? May I ask?
Okay, the clerk is going to come back. We're going to go on with the, with our, uh, uh, undocketed items section, and when she returns, she'll have the second page. There were some hours, there were some hours that were specified in the original ordinance. Well, she, here she is now. It was our recollection that there were some hours that were written into the original ordinance that were deleted at the committee level, yet they're showing on the ordinance. So we want to make certain that those limitation hours are deleted. So I'll let you read it, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, so, Council President.
We, we don't have a motion yet to discuss it, so read it and absorb it.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Now, discussion. Councilman Santa Maria was first.
Thank you, Council President. Minority Leader Donahue through the chair, are you okay with this language?
Uh, through, through the chair, I, I am. I, I believe in committee that the amendment, uh, was on line sixty-six as it is asterisk, uh, between the hours of twelve noon and eleven PM, or by special permission of the Safety Services and Licensing Committee. Uh, we were eliminating, uh, what was left of line sixty-eight on the following dates and times, and deleting line seventy through seventy-five. That's how I understood, uh, the amendment in Safety Services.
Okay, now, my only question is, again, through the chair, seventy through seventy-five is not deleted, it's inserted.
No, that's, that's what, that's what we're voting on now. The, the amendment will be, the language before you, and it's going to delete, um...
Line seventy through seventy-five.
Sixty, the following dates on line sixty-eight, and the language on seventy through seventy-five. Those are going to be deleted. And they were deleted by amendment at the council.
So do we need a motion to do that?
Councilman Stykos.
Well, it seems like we need a motion to delete these.
Excuse me?
We need, we need a motion to delete these?
No, no, we just need a motion to approve. I just wanted to make certain that you were comfortable with the, with the language. You did not have it before you. Now you do. Now you know that that language should not have been before you, and we're voting just to approve what was amended in committee.
Um, could I, I, yeah, could I, uh, ask, uh, legal counsel if this is going to be, if this is the proper way to do this? I'm, I'm concerned that somebody challenges this, uh, ordinance and they say, oh, well, you know, the version that was passed wasn't the version before, in front of the council.
The version that came up from committee was approved by committee did strike that language, but it just didn't show up in the packet that way. So what you have before you now with those lines crossed out, seventy-one on down, as well as that part of sixty-eight, is exactly what the committee approved. It just, when it came to you in the copy, it didn't show that.
So, so what this, what we're voting on is line sixty-eight ending with the words, line sixty-eight would only have the words licenses committee.
Correct.
And then line sixty-nine through seventy-five is blank.
That is correct, and that's how it came out of committee.
Okay, thank you.
So are we all understanding, uh, any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll on, on the ordinance as amended in committee.
Yes.
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 Now my committee is, uh, done.
Uh, now we have public hearings open to anyone who wants to speak on a, an undocketed item, and I have a sign-up sheet. First one is Diana Gordon. The next one is Sarah Lee. And there's no one else signed up. Is there anyone wishing to speak on a, an agenda item? An, I'm sorry, an, an undocketed item, excuse me. There being none, we'll close that section. Election of city officials, Audit Committee. There's a recommendation, uh, of an appointment of Sherri Ferdinandi, CPA, for the term to expire on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen, to fill the spot vacated by Mr. Damiano, who is now our council auditor. Is there an...
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think you all had a chance to, uh, view her extensive, uh, background, and, uh, she fits the, the parameters set forth in the, uh, the ordinance that specified that committee. So that being said, if there's no further discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, next we have, uh, the request for a reappointment to the Juvenile Hearing Board by Neil Ampere. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. And, uh, next we have a, an appointment for the Zoning Board of Review. Uh, Stephen Carrera, uh, it's a member appointment. Uh, correction should be... Stephen Carrera, it's a member appointment. Corrections should be wards four and six. Member of wards four and six, my recollection.
Through the chair, the ward four position is filled by Steve Menenucci, I believe, Menecucci.
He's the, he's the, he's the west of Reservoir. And this one would be the ward four six.
I'll confirm that. I had sent out an email on this because when I checked, Joey Montanaro served in that position.
Yeah, but we, it was realigned when, when Mr. Sepey didn't choose to give, give up his place as a, as an alternate. They got realigned, so. We're still within compliance on this. Because he is also west of Reservoir anyway. So is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman, Councilman Favickio, and then Arquette, and then Stychos. Councilman Favickio.
Thank you, Council President. Just a question more than anything. I had an inquiry from one of my constituents also in ward six, who is, I think, a third alternate. I guess she was asking about what happens with the alternates when someone moves into one of these positions. It may not be something, obviously, that we would deal with tonight, but just wondering what happens on the realignment.
It's, it's no different. They still remain as their alternate position.
But then there would be, was Mr. Carrera the, an alternate prior here too?
No, he was not. He's a new appointment. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to say that I felt Joey Montanaro did a fabulous job as Chairwoman of the Zoning Board. There were several issues from Ward three that came up before the board, and, you know, did an excellent job, in my opinion. I'd also like the Charter Review Commission, I don't think he missed a meeting, I think he was at every meeting. I know Mr. Carrera is a very hardworking individual. He's a man who will basically use his best judgment and conscience on every decision. So I think Steve would do an excellent job as Zoning Board member.
Councilman Stychos.
I also am pleased with this appointment. I think Steve Carrera, who I know also from the Charter Review Commission, will do a good job. I would just add that I think it's important, not only to use your good judgment, but also to follow the law, which I felt that sometimes that is not done by the zoning board. I would, would add, there's a, there's a, since Mr. Carrera is here, that there is an outstanding issue that the council attempted to raise with the zoning board, which is that the zoning board hears all the cases and then, late in the evening, decides all the cases. And that is a process that shuts the public out of the process because the public, most people work and they go home. And so the zoning board ends up making the decision, decisions, and having the, the give and take in the, in the decision-making process late at night. And what this council, through a resolution, urged was that the, that the zoning board hear a case, discuss it and decide, hear a case, discuss it and decide, in sequential order like the city council does, like most governmental bodies do. That change was also endorsed by the Cranston Chamber of Commerce that pointed out that the present system costs small business money because their attorneys have to wait, regardless of where they are on the docket, they have to wait until the very end of the meeting. And so they're usually paid by the hour, which rolls up the costs for a small business person trying to get a business off the ground. So I hope that you'll support a, a more open process where cases are heard one at a time and...
Council, Councilman Santa Maria and I were going through with the, the tractor trailer parking and the camper parking and all of that. We, we met with the new management company and ownership of, of that plaza. And they expressed an equal disappointment that the temporary structures that dot the landscape up there were supposed to have been temporary storage while the construction was going on. Yet here we are, over, over a year later, the construction is completed, and yet we still have boxes on the ground. So what, he, the management company expressed an interest in getting that out. So where do we stand? Has anyone had any contact with them, or?
Yes, if I may, I'd like to default to Stan Pykel, Building Inspector. He has looked into this for us.
Thank you, Council, Council President. I did look into it today with the management company, and they expressed their desire to remove these storage units as soon as possible. I guess they ran into some issues with the death of the store manager, and they couldn't work out the logistics of getting some of the merchandise removed. But they, they are in the process of working through that.
And again, we need to tighten up. I, I'm going to ask for some input from you and the solicitor, how we tighten these temporary structures up. Because to me, a temporary structure is, you have a disaster in your home, you, you get a, a pod or one of those trailers, you put your stuff in it while you're remodeling, your remodeling is done, you move the stuff back in and it goes away, not a year and a half or two. So, you know, I was told by the assessor that these were being taxed as tangible. But, you know, it's still...
I understand.
They apply for temporary, not permanent.
Right, I understand.
If, I, I think at some point in time, if it goes over a year, then maybe we should tax them permanently, as a permanent structure, because they've been there permanently.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about tracking it, but, you know, now that it's brought to my attention, I think it's probably a good idea that I, you know, try to keep a record of the temporary structures given out to make sure that we're, you know, we're following up on it.
And just as an aside, after the accident, the terrible tragedy that happened up at that location, there's a gate that, I don't know who it belongs to, but it, it, it's along the buffer zone between, it's in the back of the property. If you face Walmart and you're on to the right, the driveway, there's a, there's a rather large fence that, that's supposed to prevent people from going into the, into that area. And the gate is always unlocked. It's always swinging wide open. So I'd like to know who, who was supposed to secure that and who has permission to go in there. I was hoping that, that, that's where a lot of the people are complaining, because a lot of the trash is just blowing through that gate, going into that, that nice woodland that's in between them, so. If you could just check into that.
I will, I will. I'll check.
A report now, but at some point, just let me know.
Okay.
Uh, council member communications. Any council member have any communications? Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. I have been working with the state DOT on the light at Atwood Avenue and Walnut Grove with Representative Ucci. And I'd like to, if possible, through the chair, to read the response, to put it on the record. Or would you rather me do board points?
How long's the response?
It's a, it's a short paragraph. With regard to Atwood Avenue and Walnut Grove, we are currently at 90% design and should be moving forward to final PS and E within the next couple of months. We have started the right-of-way process for this location as well. I am hoping to advertise January 2013, so construction can begin in the spring, pending no unforeseen issues. This location involves the relocation of a water main line as well as a gas line to accommodate the regrading being done at the Atlanta Street intersection. Bottom line is we are moving forward, but the reason it's taking a little longer is because it is not just a simple signal installation. I have shared this with the administration, so we're just going to keep on them for the spring 2013 installation. So I just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman Favickio.
Thank you, Council President. I had a couple of things I just wanted to bring to the, to the attention of the whole council. First of all, we, we have some rodent issues even in ward six, over near the prison. I went out to meet with some, some of the neighbors, and there's, there's a growing problem there as well. And I know the city has a program, I think Wednesday they're going out and they're going to be addressing that issue all across the city. I think it's a good thing. The other thing is, I think there are some flyers I know that are available through the city, which kind of educate people on how to prevent the spread of rodents. So I don't know how we can get them out to people, but I would just bring it to your attention. Another, second issue that I've noticed, a couple more on the abandoned house front. We have another one at 15 Capuano, and there's another one on Fife Street in different sections. Capuano's at the other end of Garden City. I don't know if it's similar to the Kearney Street issue, but it's, I noticed they've been boarded up for a while. And I don't know if we should maybe keep a tab every month of how many houses are in that category, but it seems to be a growing problem in the city. And the last thing I just wanted to mention, and I've been dealing with Mr. Lopez with regard to some trees that were taken away on New London Avenue where borders near Brayton Field and along the highway there. The state, the state's been trying to determine who took down the buffer. There were a bunch of trees that were taken out, probably in the spring. And Mr. Lopez has been working on that with Mr. Flynn, who's now the state planner, who was formerly with the city. And we're hoping to try to get some new trees planted over there. Hopefully, we won't have to tap into, Councilman Stychos, the fund that helped create. Mr. Lopez advises that that should be something that the state should bear the burden of the cost. I just wanted to bring to the attention, it still has not been resolved.
Just to, your, your rodent issue, is that something that could be accessed on the website? The information, you said there's an information packet that's going out, is that, does that currently appear on the website, or can we get that on the website?
I don't, I'm not aware. I don't know if it's recorded.
Through the chair, yes, sir. I ordered that up probably two months ago to make sure that it was there, and we refer people to the website. We also have printed copies for people that don't have access.
And someone over here?
Can I just make a comment on Councilman Favickio's comments? You need to tell me they don't trim the median strip along New London Avenue, but they'll cut down trees in a buffer zone.
That's correct. Yeah, although they just trimmed the, if I may, Council President, they just trimmed...
Just for the record, they still haven't trimmed the median strip along, over by Traffic Tribunal. It looks absolutely horrible, but yet they'll cut down trees in a natural buffer zone. Don't get it. Just don't get it.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. Just would like to follow up on something Councilman Favickio said about the rodent problem. I'd like to know if the city plans on enforcing the garbage can covers. Are they going to cite individuals who don't cover their garbage? Are we, is the city looking into any particular type of garbage container as they have specialized ones in Warwick and in Providence? I think we need to be proactive. I think we do have a problem with rodents here, and I, and we need to, we need to work together with the council administration to solve this problem. It's the number one issue when I walk my district, so we really need to address it.
Council President. Thank you. Yes, we're attacking the rodent issue on a number of fronts, Councilman. Among those being is, we do have a full-time rodent control officer. We subsidize that with putting two of them on the road. And when we still couldn't keep up, we hired two outside contractors. So we ran that tandem, if you will, for almost a month. And we caught up with all the calls from the constituents to a point where we can handle it in-house again. Now, occasionally, there's an eruption. And when there is an eruption, such as I believe it was Councilman Favickio mentioned, in a specific neighborhood that's brought to our attention, then on Wednesdays, we do what we call a SWAT team. And we go through the entire neighborhood, whether the people have called us or not, okay? Last but not least, when it comes to garbage cans. Very, very, very difficult task to try to enforce. But as far as getting to a different type of garbage container, yes, you're spot on. Next year, next calendar year, 2013, we do need to sit down and address a new contract with our resource recovery. I'm sorry, with... Waste Management, thank you. And part of those discussions are going to be trying to...
Correction, correction. It will be a, a contract that will go out to bid. We've already extended, we've already extended their contract to its full extent, so this will be a whole new bid process.
Point taken. I stand corrected. Part of those discussions with potential vendors are going to include trying to take advantage of the single streaming that's now going on. The single streaming to try to improve the quantity of recyclables that we are picking up, okay? And part of that would be to go to the mechanical cans, which have the automatic lid closure on them. So that should go a long way for us.
Thank you for that update.
Councilman Stychos.
Yeah, a little bit more on the rad issue. The, Mr. Cordy, you stated that it was very difficult to cite people for improper trash storage. And I'm wondering if the administration will be coming forward with a proposal to make it easier to cite people? Or is that something the council needs to do?
Through the chair. It's very easy to cite them, Councilman. The problem is getting results. And those come from a number of standpoints. Who owns the property? Does anybody even bother showing up to court if they're called in? There's a whole plethora of reasons. And unfortunately, these are the same folks that even if you gave them rodent control direction as far as what they should be doing, don't do it anyway. So the short of the long is, it's real easy to cite them, but it doesn't gain us anything but eat up a bunch of manpower. I think the solution is long-term, and the short-term is the baiting. And the long-term is getting proper containers that will be immune to their disregard.
Maybe this is something that the next ordinance committee we should examine?
To examine the trash and lids on the cans?
Yeah, and what, what could be done. I'm just thinking that, you know, like, you know that Warwick has those cans, but every citizen has three cans, and now they only need two. So maybe we could pick up some cheap ones from Warwick.
I'm sure you'll go to work on that, Councilman. Have faith in your judgment building.
Just, just a point, and not because he's sitting in the audience this evening, but maybe at some point, we need to put some teeth into the court so that the court's ruling is the final ruling. And that at some point down the road, someone doesn't say, well, we're just going to slap you on the wrist because the court ordered you to do this, but we're going to, we're going to allow an exception. You know, the court's, the court's ruling should be the final ruling, which is not the case right now. There are too many, there are too many slaps on the wrist and people getting away with things that they should be, they should be cited for. There's another whole process beyond the court, so if we can do away with that, maybe then we'll get some, some teeth into this. I'm sure the judge would agree by nodding. Yes. Okay, anyone else on communications? Is there any old business? Introduction of, oh, is there old business?
It's kind of old, but I see it under miscellaneous as well. The local limits ordinance, that's still in the public comment period with DEM. So I believe because of the time limitations they have, we're going to propose to put that on the October schedule to see if it's ready for passage at that point.
And has, has there been any attendance at those meetings, those hearings?
That is a written process, I believe, with DEM. We have a meeting there this Thursday, so I'll inquire as to how that's going.
Okay, very good. Introduction of new business.
Prior to July 1, 1995. Both of these ordinances are to be referred to a special finance committee hearing to be held on Thursday, October 25th at 6:30. We have proposed ordinance 9-12-4 in amendment, in amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic for Stop... five, entitled motor vehicles and traffic, for a stop sign at Highland Street at, at Overhill Road, to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on October first. We have a resolution reducing food sources for rodents to be referred to the Public Works Committee for hearing on October first. We have a petition from Johnson and Wales for abandonment of a portion of Harbor Side Boulevard to be referred to Public Works Committee for hearing on October first. We have a poll location request for joint poll for Men, um, Machanikit, Machanikit Valley Parkway.
Is that it?
We have, no, no. We have the following new claims that have been received. Property damage claim from Michael Horcroft for, from an alleged incident on September seventeenth. A property damage claim from Henry Ricatelli from an alleged incident on September seventh. These are in two thousand and twelve. We have a property damage claim from Antonio Di Simone from an alleged incident on August fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. We have a property damage claim from Roland Reed Senior from an alleged incident on September tenth, two thousand and twelve. We have a property damage claim of Aden De Cezares from an alleged incident on September sixth, two thousand and twelve. We have a personal injury claim from Solani Sanchez and Felix Jose Manon from an alleged motor vehicle incident on August twenty-second, two thousand and twelve. We have a property damage claim from that same alleged incident from Victoria Santara Di Pestana. We have a property damage claim from David Minanacian from alleged incident on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve. We also have a claim filed by attorney Kolbe on behalf of a group of retired firefighters for unpaid pension benefits. They are David Anterton, Walter Kraft III, Frank Delbonis, Pasco Falco, John Galvin, Randy Gold, Ronald Gabriel, Tom Gregory, Ronald Hargraves, Richard Kelly, Michael Palazzo, Donald Palumbo, Barry Rose Senior, and Albert Sutter. All of these are to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on October twenty-second.
Is that it?
I did. I think we have one missing. We do, we do have another ordinance that was nine, nine-dash-twelve-dash-five. It's an amendment of Title Six, Chapter Four of the Code of the City of Cranston, titled Animals Generally for Chicken Coops. This is to be referred to the ordinance commi, committee for hearing on October eleventh.
Is that completed? Okay.
That is all the reg, regular business. We do have one piece of late business that was received from Councilman Navarro this afternoon. It is not drafted. It is in your packets. It's for a stop sign. That will need to be voted on by the council if you want to accept it as late business.
I make a motion to accept that ordinance past the deadline.
Does the motion a second? Any discussion? Clerk, please take your role.
Councilman Darnier?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Navarro?
Yes.
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 Yes. Is there a motion to refer the new business to the committees as stated by the clerk and the special counsel?
Councilman Stychos? Yes. The, the last ordinance that was read concerning the keeping of chickens, there's a page missing in, in what's in the packet. Does that make it, I just want to make sure the entire thing gets referred to committee?
The missing pages are due to the copier jamming. I do have the entire ordinance that council, Attorney Quinlan forwarded with the changes.
All right, so that's what will get referred to committee-
Right, yes.
-as the whole ordinance. Okay, thank you.
And again, after what happened at the last meeting, I would encourage my colleagues to check the electronic copies and, and click on and make sure that you have the, the proper copies when, when we get to the committee. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. Just for the record, I, through the chair, to the clerk, Ms. Wall, did you read into the record the bird feeder resolution? I was in conversation with Councilman Santa Maria, so-
Yes, that was the rodent food source. That was referred to Public Works.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second to refer the new business to the committees and the special meetings as announced by the clerk. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilman Darnier?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Navarro?
Yes.
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 Yes. The city council's next monthly meeting will be held on Monday, October twenty-second, two thousand and twelve. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Good night, gentlemen.